Testing, testing. Good evening, everybody. Thank you guys for coming out this evening. Today, I would like to call or order the regular meeting held at Village Hall. Today is April 1st and the time is? 7:22 PM. Clerk Key, please call the row.
Trustee Norwood?
Present.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Present.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Present.
Trustee House?
Present.
Trustee Holmes is absent. Trustee Belcher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, if everybody will stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, if you will continue to stand, we're gonna do prayer really quick. We're gonna have Kim do prayer. All right. Next, we have public comment. And let me just give you a couple of rules. But I'm gonna give the mic to Chief Lacy first. Go ahead, Chief. You got a mic? Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. Due to credible threats, that is one of the reasons why this meeting was delayed. We had to rearrange some things, but we do have credible threats in reference to this meeting tonight. Unfortunately, if there are any outbursts, if there are any clapping, or anything that is, or if we get another credible threat, the meeting will be closed.
All right, thank you so much for that. You have two minutes. You can stand to the podium. They're gonna call your name and you have two minutes to address this body. So you can start. Are you calling the names? Okay. So she'll call the name. You have two minutes. You go to that podium there and address this body. And it is public comment. Thank you. Chief, you got a mic? I need a mic.
All right, you have two. You have two minutes to make whatever comments you make. Ladies and gentlemen, when I said that the meeting will be closed, if there aren't any disruptions, this meeting will be shut down for another day. So please be, please be conscious, let the people talk, and then we can move forward with this meeting. But I will not make this comment again.
Good evening, mayor and board. I wanted to come out tonight as a neighboring resident in the village of Riverdale. And I like to see people involved in the media. But here it is, I have an indicted mayor that's serving in our community, and we don't have this much media coverage going on. But we over here, having media coverage here, and we don't put out the good things that is happening. But you guys gotta connect the dots. D-O-T-T-S. Dots. All of this stuff is coming about because you got individuals fighting for seats. But I'm gonna tell you, don't repeat history. And when I say don't repeat history, you better look in the city of Harvey. The city of Harvey had a mayor that the people wanted out so bad. And now you look and see what they got. You gotta be careful. And one thing I wanna say to the residents of Dalton, make sure you guys educate yourself. The trustees should not be having meetings outside of means that's already been scheduled by the governing body. You set your means at the beginning of the year and you meet. And then, I wanted to say, I'm never known as being a former trustee, where always a one trustee is always the mayor pro tem. You're supposed to take a vote. And amongst your vote, once the meeting is set, then you take your, you take your mayor pro tem. But I also wanna caution you guys. I did my research. Bud Anderson is not a very good attorney. Take a look at the village of South Village. Same things is happening. The man in, in New York is going through the same thing. He causes chaos when he don't get what he wants. So I'm telling you guys, pay attention.
Ladies and gentlemen, no clapping, please. No outbursts. Let them talk, so that way we can move forward with the meeting for safety reasons. Again, for safety reasons.
Good evening, Mary Avant, resident of Dalton. To all the department heads sitting on the dais for the last few meetings, you've decided to share your comments and your feelings. We don't want it and we don't need it. You are not allowed to answer any of the residents' concerns, so why would I hope or want to hear anything from you other? You don't know if you don't live here or pay taxes here, but your thoughts and concerns would be different if you did. Number two, Andrew Holmes, in his absence, maybe he's in the back listening. The nerve of you to sit in the seat as a trustee here with the allegations. The people put you in the seat to serve as a trustee to the residents, not to the mayor. You say you're an activist of law enforcement? Well, I was an officer in the trenches for 25 years. That meant doing the work, not talking the talk, not looking for a camera at every turn. I was locking people up, even took a bullet. All in the name of being a public servant for the people. In light of the allegations, I, as a resident of Dalton, former law enforcement officer, and female, along with other Dalton residents, would like to see you display some integrity and step down pending the outcome of this investigation. And to our attorney, it is a disgrace that you will not explain to this body what the rules of the First Amendment are. Total violation, so continue to get your check.
All right, next person.
All right, one more time, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
One more time, I am cleaning the room, okay? Okay, Ms. Avant, no, they don't. When it's a safety issue, it falls under the police department.
All right, caller, next name.
Two minutes. Good evening, residents. Good evening, Board of Trustees. The four of you are... I'm tired of our rules and regulations change every time we have a meeting, okay? First of all, it's not public comment, because their ordinance have never, ever been changed. Correct me if I'm wrong, Trustee House. Right. So is, is that the two minutes? Or y'all got something else going on? Okay? Let me know. And... Well, you know what you're doing. You're violating our rights. And that's a shame that our rights are being violated. For clapping, I tried, you tried to put me out last week, last month, you know? And it don't make sense. Make this make sense to me. And I'm agreeing with Mary. I'm asking for Andrew Holmes to step down, which he shouldn't have never been in that seat in the first place, because he never lived here. So stop blowing smoke up the residents' behinds, because this is ridiculous and I'm tired of it. Mayor, you might as well step down too, you know? Because I'm tired of that too. You know, this is a disgrace that you have done to this village. You thought that other fellow was bad? No. This is a thousand times worse than what he could ever be. You know? And they say that you're the worst mayor in America. I agree.
Right, next person.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Good evening, our fellow residents of Dalton. I want to take this time to express my deepest gratitude to Tiffany Henyer and her team for their commendable efforts to better our community. As a longtime resident of Dalton, I have witnessed the transformative impact of three different administrations. However, it is under Mayor Henyer's tenure that I have felt the most connected and valued. In the short time the mayor has been in office, she has accomplished more for the community than any of her predecessors did in their entire term. Making me feel proud to be a part of Dalton. Under Mayor Henyer's leadership, we have seen significant improvement in our community infrastructure. Paved alleys, snow removal services have made our roads safer and more accessible. Furthermore, FEMA supportive services have ensured that we have, and that we have the help that is needed in time of crisis.
All right, one more outburst, I'm clearing the room. Okay? One more outburst, I'm clearing the room.
All right, next person. All right, next.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm almost rendered speechless by that last public commenter. Some people are easy to please, I guess. But first of all, what's going on out there is ridiculous. Understand safety, and if there was a credible threat, as you say, Chief Lacy, there should have been a better plan in place. People should have been informed. People show up expecting to come to a public meeting and to have access. So this is the result of not having a structured plan in place for the credible threat that you said was, was warranted. People are frustrated. They want answers. They want transparency. They want what these four, four trustees, Trustee Norwood, Trustee Tammy Brown, Trustee House, Trustee Kiana Belcher, and Clerk Keys want. And I'm appalled that the one trustee that's sitting there doesn't want the same thing. I mean, I don't even know how you can honor the seat that you were elected to. It's a disgrace. It's a disgrace. In abstentia, Andrew Holmes does need to step down. He's also a disgrace. It's only a matter of time before everything is brought to the forefront. And people will be satisfied at that point. People will be satisfied. They want change. They want better. We want better. So I, I just think that this is ridiculous. It's disrespectful. And to speak about safety, this is unsafe. I got pushed. Other people got pushed just trying to get into a public meeting. That's unsafe. So let's talk about everyone's safety, not just the mayor's. Thank you.
Good evening to everyone, to the mayor, to the trustees, and all the residents here. I have not been in Dalton as long as many of you. But under Mayor Henner, I have seen things change for the seniors and things that she have done, and what things she have done for, for me and my spouse personally. The problem is, we are divided. And when you are divided, we will fall. So we need to come together and support her. You might not agree with me, but that is my opinion. Together we stand, divided we fall. And understand that. We'll be just like the children of Israel in the Bible, when Moses looked up and got the commandments and came down, and everybody was doing their own thing. And they've been traveling around in the wilderness for the longest. And if we keep up with this attitude, we will be traveling around in the wilderness for a long time also. Thank you.
Dolores Tims, 37-year resident of Dalton. In the 37 years I've been there, I've seen many changes. Some were for the better, some were not. And I think we're at a cross that, in the road where we don't know to go right or left. And this has to change. I look at, as I come into this area, I look at Greenwood Falls, that entire street from 144th down to 147th. You don't see any paper. You don't see anything. But I live farther south, right off of Greenwood, on 158th Street. We don't get those kind of services. We, I, I would like to buttress on what the person from Riverdale had to say. And he was talking about the meetings and scheduled meetings, and we shouldn't be having a squirrel meetings or whatever they're called. But I, ever since I've been in Dalton, there were two meetings scheduled each month. The first and the third of each Monday of each month. That hasn't happened in, I know, at least 10 or 11 months. And I'd like to know why. This should be more than citizens' address. We should, some of our questions should be answered.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your three minutes are up. I apologize. Okay, do I stand corrected? Okay, did I stand corrected? I apologize. Okay, all right, no problem.
So what I'm asking, and I look at the trustees that are sitting there, and the fact that I haven't seen one of the trustees in a week, not on television with all the five or six murders that were in Chicago. That person is always at the forefront, wherever the cameras are. But I haven't seen that person. I'm not gonna call any names. And that person is not here tonight. So I think that needs to be addressed by our mayor and anyone else that could, anyone else that could answer that. Thank you.
All right. I apologize, ma'am. Now your three minutes are up. Or two minutes. I apologize, two minutes.
Testing, testing.
I hope so. But I feel crowded. I just wanna... Okay. All right, so last time I came, I was kinda muted. So I just wanna make sure that I'm not muted this time, because I do want the mayor, Tiffany Henyer, to step down. I need Keith Freeman to quit today, resign, because you are not what we need for Dalton. I grew here, and I know you grew here too. You used to get bullied, so allegedly, let me say that. But I know you grew here too. However, you have messed up our town. I've been a resident in Dalton for over 30 years. Tiffany knows this, because I'm sure that that's the reason why she didn't do what she was supposed to do. However, Tiffany, to everybody, every resident, I'm sorry. I apologize if I sound irate. I had my radiation today. I have cancer. Of course I do. Tiffany stole money from a cancer foundation. How dare you? How dare you steal? And I helped you with your campaign. How dare you steal from us? I helped you buy my wigs. Are you gonna reimburse me for the wigs that I've been spending my money on? Are you gonna reimburse me? Just let me know if I'm gonna get my money back, Tiffany. Because I helped you with your vision to get in that seat. You told me that you was going to run and make a change for Dalton. You have to make a change for Dalton. I'm sorry, I got a little anxiety, because I don't like getting pushed and stuff in crowd, because I'm disabled. But y'all don't even care to let the disabled in first. That should have been your first concern. Why you talking about the credible threat outside? I'm really sick. I had radiation today. So I came here because I want you to get out of our town. You don't need to be here. You don't even own Dalton. So get out. Leave. We don't want you here. You own your administration. Y'all need to go. Thank you. Oh, and Coopers Park, August 31st. I'm doing an event. I have a nonprofit for tumor awareness. It's actually a real charity, cancer, that charity that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Thelma, and I really, truly believe this has to end. I'm so disappointed in what's been happening in Dalton. Mayor, you need to step down, because you have disgraced this village. You really have. Everybody up there need to go. We need to know what's happening with our money. You need to address what happened in Vegas, and you have been silent. And it's not, that's not gonna fly. You know what happened in Vegas. You know what happened. And you will not, you should be addressing it, saying something to the residents about it. And we wanna know where our money is at. We're tired of you just spending our money any type of way that you want to. It's not fair. It needs to go across the board. We didn't want that million-dollar ice rink that none of the citizens can even take part of. The only time it's open is when you giving a function. That's not for the residents. You don't love the children. You kicked the little baby out of, out of the Easter egg hunt. You don't love the children. And when you did that, that made me cry, when I seen that baby cry like that. You are a disgrace. You are. Anytime you would have your police officers kick a baby out like that, I don't care if you didn't, don't like the grandmother, but the fact that this baby was kicked out of that, it, it took away from all that you did. It took away. You are a disgrace. You didn't put black folks all the way back. And these officers, I'm ashamed of y'all, because y'all are not honoring y'all badge the correct way, because y'all doing all the stuff that the mayor wants y'all to do. And it's not right. That's not how police officers are supposed to act. You're supposed to protect us. I'm afraid of you all. I'm afraid of the Dalton Police Department.
Right, your two minutes are up.
Good evening, everybody. I don't normally speak, and I am going to hold my temper, but I'm going to say this. Mayor, you stood out on my streets, and you asked me, when you knew I didn't vote for you, to give you a chance, because you had better things. The only things that you have done were for you. You didn't do anything for the residents. You did it for yourself. These people out here, you have all messed with our rights, constitutional rights, First Amendment. And I am totally hurt. And you have acted in such a despicable way that I will never forgive you. So I'm asking for your resignation, your administrator's resignation, and the unnamed, I don't know what to call them, the trustee. That's unacceptable. You're at, everybody up there, your attitudes are totally unacceptable. There's been no work done. You haven't been over on our block. The street is split. There's water. People had floods in, in, in their basements, coming in their backyard, into their house. You've done nothing. You don't care about nobody but yourself. Thank you.
Okay, so my sister actually used my, my middle name, because she was afraid that you wouldn't let me speak. I'm Carla Wilson. I'm the mother of Alexis Wilson, killed by Dalton, Illinois police. On the ti, at the time that my daughter was killed, Tiffany stood in front of a microphone, much like this, and said that she stood with the cops, and they did do the right thing by killing my 19-year-old child. Not only did she not take those words back, she didn't offer a condolences. She's never said anything. The first thing she did was hire this group of security guards to surround her and PR. So the real reason Tiffany has security is hiding from accountability about what she said about Alexis Wilson when she was killed. Now, if you watch the coverage of this murder, these officers violated her rights, reached in her car, jumped in her car, and put seven bullets in my child, two in her head and five down her side. And the next day, you guys tried to spin it like she did something. Watch the video. She did nothing to deserve this. And again, last time they brought up Alexis, she's doing what she does now. Look this way, look that way, every way but at the person talking. You don't give a damn, and you never did, and you never acted like it. She called out a whole press conference to call my daughter a criminal. An Homewood Fosmore graduate with no criminal record. But Tiffany, you have one, because we used your mugshot to protest in front of your house. And that's why you hid. That's why you have security. So let's tell the truth, which I know you're incapable of. I wouldn't trust this woman if she stood on a stack of bibles and had her tongue notarized. Not a damn thing she says comes out her mouth is true. Thank you. Alexis Wilson.
All right, okay. All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, unfortunately, the meeting is now closed down. We need you guys to move to the door. Okay? Okay, just a lieutenant, lieutenant, just the one that's making the ruckus. Just the one that's making the ruckus, escort him out.
All right. Does that conclude, uh, public comment? All right, that concludes public comment. Next on the agenda is general announcement. Do anybody have any general announcements?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
You do, or?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have more on that list or no? All right, it's two more names. All right, go ahead. And let me reiterate, if it get out of hand, we will cancel the meeting and post it for another day. Because everybody's safety, uh, we will not jeopardize. So that's for the record. Alright, go ahead.
Turn it up, turn it up. Uh, my name is Paula Ward. I know that you all know me. Uh, I'm a resident of, uh, Dalton. And my son was robbed and murdered along with four other customers at Maxwell's. I'm, uh, here to talk about everything that's going on. I know what's going on. What I wanna know is why isn't security still at Maxwell's? Why is not Maxwell's not closed down? That restaurant is twenty-four hours. Do you know how many people get killed, hugged, robbed? Everything that they're just trying to go buy a sandwich. My son was killed, shot in his heart trying to go and buy something to eat. All these other restaurants y'all closing. Pablo, all these other restaurants y'all fail to close Maxwell's. This is the only time I always come up here because my only son, his life is still trying to buy something to eat. Y'all told me y'all passed the bill and if they didn't have their own security by ten o'clock, somebody, it had to be an off-duty police officer up there or they get their own security. That restaurant is making Dalton so much money but so many people are getting killed and hugged up there. If you go within and look it up, you'll see how many people have been hurt. Y'all trying to fix everything else. Y'all gotta fix the security first. Y'all gotta get some more police officers first. This is a little village. Every time something happen, South Highland, everybody else gotta come over here and help us. We too small. The village is too small. But the village is so angry now. People using their lives for no reason. My son, my only son is gone. I can't give him back. I can't do nothing. I have to look at Maxwell's open every day. They doing nothing but sweeping up under the rug. The next morning, six o'clock, they still out selling food. How do you think that make me and my family feel? Nothing is still being done. They still open.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nikisha Davis. I am the wife of murdered business owner Tavaris Davis. I'm here because it's been almost two years since my husband has been murdered. There have been suspects that have been identified. I've been getting the runaround from the Dalton Police Department. And I'm here because I'd like answers. If there have been suspects that have been identified, then I wanna know why there has not been an arrest. You all posted on the media that there was an arrest. You all said something in a board meeting and everyone clapped and cheered, but you didn't say that you all released him. There were four individuals, including my husband, and my husband ended up being killed. So why hasn't someone been arrested in this case? I am a wife. I'm a mother of three children. My children and my family are suffering because of this loss. And Dalton Police, the detectives have been sitting around twiddling their fingers on this case. This is hurtful. When I've been in contact, I've been asking questions. I've been in contact with the state's attorney's office. I'm pushing this case. I've had the crime stoppers come out to do additional work canvassing the neighborhood, to assist the police. And nothing has been done. My husband Tavaris Edward Davis deserves justice. Thank you.
Alright, is it one more? Go ahead. Alright, um, thank you for your public comment. Next on the agenda is general announcements. Do anybody have any general announcements?
Um, yes, ma'am.
Alright, go ahead.
Okay, um, I hear a lot of outrage and I think a lot of it is just around, um, having a space that can accommodate. And I'm concerned also that there may be some violations of the Over Meetings Act because we need to have us face when we know that there's, uh, this many people. Um, as such, I'm gonna make a motion that we postpone this meeting and continue the agenda to Monday, April 8th, a week from today at six-thirty, Dalton Park District, 14700 Evers. So that is my motion.
Um, trustee.
Thank you.
We are not postponing the meeting. We are here. And basically, we have two items on the agenda. So we can basically continue with her meeting and get through the two items that's on the meeting. So my advice to the board is we already here. Let's handle the business and not let the business handle you guys. We're not having no meeting at no Dalton Park District. So I'm just making that crystal clear. Clerk, what are you doing? You out of order. You out of order. Did I call the road? Did I say call the road? I'm still speaking. You're out of order, Clerk Key. You out of order, Clerk Key. Like, stop. Y'all out of order. Everybody wanna run stuff. Y'all don't run this house over here. Stop, please. So as I was stating, we need to continue with the business. We are here. People came to a meeting to hear what we have been doing in our village. The department head, the lawyer, everyone's here. So I'm asking for you guys to sit here and to deal with what's going on.
Trustee Tammy, round.
And that's the problem that we have. Wonder if we have dysfunction? This is the reason.
Trustee Belcher.
If y'all walk out, y'all walk out. We got business down. Okay. Alright, so go ahead. Go ahead. Handle your business and we gonna handle ours. Trustee House, I thought y'all was leaving. Y'all should come back, sit down, and handle the business and let's finish to do what we came here to do, which is go through our agenda, but y'all give interviews. Can y'all all exit, please? Thank you. Y'all don't wanna handle the business here? Say it.
Officers, clear the room. The media has to step out also. Clear the room.
Everybody, they can step outside. Everybody. No, just the, the people here, they're fine. Everybody else, media included, has to clear the room.
Testing, testing. If you are staying, please do so. If you're not, please exit so we can finish our meeting so you can hear from us as a body of what we do here in our village. This is a board meeting about business, not chaos, not confusion, not disruptions. That is not what we represent here in the village of Dalton. So for those that come for the show, go outside. Because the showing is not in here. We talking about what we've done as a community. So please, if you're gonna leave, exit and please shut the door so we can conclude our business here. Alright, James, y'all ready? Alright, give me one minute. Alright, James, ready? Alright, we gonna give people time to clear out. Alright, um, I wanna thank everybody for staying that actually came here to hear what we do um, in the village of Dalton. As you just saw, it's chaos amongst our four trustees. They didn't come here to handle the business. They came here to do a political theater stunt, which you just saw. We didn't get through any business as it relates to a scheduled board meeting here in our village, which we supposed to do. But yeah, everybody cry about meetings and we should have more. Why have more means when it's gonna just be chaotic like this? Our job is to make sure we take care of the business and not allow the business to handle us, what you just saw before you. It's a shame that every time it's time to really take care of things, such as making sure payroll is paid. Because guess what? They didn't put on pain the police, the public works, making sure your concrete is down. They did not vote on none of that. But this is the things that I face as a mayor here in the village of Dalton. And it's sad because you're seeing it with your own two eyes. I can't make this up. Y'all see the people walk out at every single board meeting. You see when we had the other board meeting, they walked out when it was a thirty-three million dollar, um, issue on the table where we supposed to win a closed session. We would've made sure we was in a better predicament if they were to stay and make sure they took care of the business. But yet, the media don't report that. It's good to see the media out here. Uh, but I wish you guys would come for the positive things and not the chaos and not the media show. Because that's all this is. I get it. We're clickbait. We're hot right now. And I get it. This is what sells papers. But I wish you guys would've came to our Easter event that we had on, what was that, Saturday? We had over five hundred kids out there happy, running around, giving away baskets. It was amazing. But you should want the good stories, just like you want the bad stories. But it's sad that people tell you false information with no facts. And y'all run and y'all write it. Y'all know y'all can destroy people's lives by just writing things that's not true. And then later, that person has to sit there and try to fix what you guys have broken because y'all have a national platform. So this is my outreach to the media, which I said it several times. Please, please do your research. You guys call yourself journalists. Please research the stuff before y'all put things on your national platform and hurt people that should not be, uh, political damage because y'all wanna make a story for clickbait. That's alright? And I get it. People sell their souls. I get it. You wanna be the hottest thing right now. I get it. You guys go and y'all get awards for who got the best story. I get it. But please stop destroying people's lives and tell the truth, please. And then if you follow me, y'all should've paid attention to the Tiffany Henyrd on the Moon Podcast. All the things that y'all posted, which was all fake and false, I showed y'all the truth. Y'all get the same footage y'all had, but none of y'all played it. Y'all had to make it like we was lying, like I was lying. But you guys was telling lies, and that's not cool. So that is my information to you guys. So I don't know how y'all gonna spend this meeting or say whatever, but show the facts. All the trustees walked out because they couldn't have their way. And that's not how government works. Governments works like this. Good, bad, or indifferent, we work together. We put on a good collective front for the public and we fight in the back. But yet, people came here for a stunt, a show. Because all y'all came out, I don't never see y'all come out for nothing positive like this. How y'all came out like this, come out to the next thing that we have. Just like y'all out here for the bad press, which people won't clickbait. So with that being said, we gonna get through what I've been doing as your mayor of the village of Dalton. And thank you, residents, for always supporting me, loving on me, and encouraging me and keeping me in your prayers. Because I need that. Because as you can see, I'm under attack. So thank you. First, uh, I know we was going to entertain a couple issues. The media wrote about Pablo's who got shut down in our village for multiple shootings, multiple fights. But yet again, this is what I mean about you guys not doing no research. Y'all just let them go on the news and tell those lies. I'm gonna let Chief Lacy speak to that. Because we shut them down? Yes, we shut them down here in the village. And then guess what? When they opened back up, they had another shooting. Another shooting. Did y'all come and write that? And all I'm saying to y'all is the fight that we in, y'all don't live here. You go off of hearsight, what somebody told you, and don't fact-check it. Y'all call me when a shooting happened, but y'all don't call me when something positive going on in the community. Come on, media, let's build a relationship and stop letting people around us dictate what our relationship is. This is my omelette to you, and I'm gonna keep saying it. Please, fact-check before you write about something that you know nothing about because you in the middle of our political fight, as you can see. We didn't pay nobody today. No bills got approved. How do we fix the like posts on people's blogs that they're crying about? Because the way y'all got it, people wanna get paid first before they come out and do work for us. That's bad. We a whole village, a whole municipality. And we can't get things done because of all of this negativity on our village. And what hardens my, I won't say hardens my heart. What hurts my heart is when, uh, you got board members hurting their time. Board members that's in government like me that don't care about where we gonna go in the next six months, year, two years. Because at the end of the day, when the smoke cleared, we still gotta live here. We still gotta get along. We still gotta move forward no matter what. And we have to fi- fix the chaos and the, the stuff that you left behind, guys, by just writing negative stories. That's not right. I don't see y'all doing that in them upper areas like how y'all be dragging us over here. I don't see y'all. But yet, us, every day, all day, y'all got us on your station. That's not cool. So I'm gonna pass the mic to Chief Lacy. He gonna talk to you about the nightclubs and all the issues we been having in our town. So before y'all welcome stories, you should've came and got real interviews from the people that got the real facts. Not people that just accusing and lying on people that's gonna end up in lawsuits and watch what you say, residents and other people that just go on the news lying on people. That's defamation of character. But y'all don't see that. Y'all just keep going with it just because it's traction for your networks. That's not cool. Alright, Chief Lacy, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanna comment on, uh, a few things that, uh, that have been developed in the, uh, in the town. Um, first, I wanna read off that the, um, Dalton Police Department wrote six hundred and thirteen parking citations, three hundred and eighty-eight state citations, four thousand four hundred and fifty-seven red lights. We had six felonies, ninety-three misdemeanors. Um, our auto theft is down. We are also moving in the direction of a tactical unit. But unfortunately, I don't think that this is going to, uh, get to the people to see because I see the media are basically closing up. But in reference to Pablo's, we closed Pablo's probably multiple times. And what ended up happening is that with the state, they had an appeal. Well, with the appeal that they had, they were able to open up again. Right after they opened up, they had another shooting. Uh, and unfortunately, nobody covered that. Uh, I open my door to the media if they wanna talk. But obviously, I don't think that's the case. I'm very proud of the Dalton Police Department. We're moving in the right direction. And what we're going to do, officers, we're gonna, we're gonna shut it down. Ladies and gentlemen, for right now, for safety reasons, we are shutting the meeting down.